As you wish.
Good evening, folks. I'm going to call this council business meeting to order for December 3rd at 7:00 PM. Councilor Minutelli should be here shortly. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is in its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business will be council to consider acceptance of minutes for October 24th, 2008, which was a special council meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Those were the minutes that Administrator Winowski wanted to change, and then we got -- that's why we're hearing them again tonight, and then we got the verbatim from Erica from the DVD. So if we wanted to include those, we can't change the minutes, but if we want to include what the revision Ed wanted in the verbatim, we can include those with the October 24th minutes. I don't know if they would have to be read into the minutes or just given the copy to Erica.
Why would a copy have to be given to Erica? She's the one that gave us this copy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Council, first of all, let me ask the councilors, have you all had a chance to read your packets?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll find with that. Councilors, you've all saw my emails going back and forth to Erica and asking her to really go in and look at verbatim, and I actually messed up part of that, but verbatim what was said, and she has provided that to us. Is anyone comfortable with what was said? In her transcribing it as said?
Mm-hmm.
And you all recollect if that was the conversation?
Yes.
Okay, before we go any further, Mr. Winowski has a question?
Well, I just, just that Erica had said, she had sent an email that basically said, "After reviewing the minutes of October 24th, my personal opinion is that Ed's changes to the minutes accurately reflect what was stated. Both interpretations represent the same thing. His changes are more clear and concise than mine."
Right, yeah. But then I went back and replied and said, "Thank you for that comment. However, I would prefer, as council's wishes, to have it verbatim," and that's what she provided. So if that is okay, we'll ask Erica to take the verbatim portion that she has sent us and include it into the October 24th minutes as she has done. In other words, leave it in there. Try to take it out. And Councilor Branch, you'll have a puzzled look in your face.
If I may, I'm just, I'm assuming it's the revision to the minutes is what we're looking at?
Yeah.
And I'm having a hard time putting the last sentence into proper context. It just, if you read it, it doesn't really make sense.
And I say that honestly, looking into the eyes of Senator Quox right here, is that the one?
The very last line.
Oh, the very last. "This was not my goal. The goal is to get the process going."
Which one of you, I'm sorry?
I think he's looking at the revision page.
I'm looking at this page.
Sure.
Do you have this one?
Oh, Ed's thing.
Yeah, that was Mr. Winowski's.
Oh, this was, okay, this was your revision?
Yes.
Okay.
And basically, all he was doing was just printing it because up to that point, after that, the rest of it was fine.
Okay, then, yes, I am good.
Okay, so...
Councilor Branch said revising. We're not revising. We're just adding this to the minutes.
We're adding this to it.
Adding this to it.
Correct.
And there's a typo. Winowski noted he would drop by Attorney Bruton's office. So that he has to go on the last sentence, on the revision.
Where was that?
Last, last line.
Right here. That he would go.
Okay. Roll call on the acceptance of the minutes.
Councilor Quox?
Aye.
Councilor Burge Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Branch?
Aye.
Councilor Plasky?
Aye.
Councilor Minutelli?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Okay, October 29th, 2008, special council meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Corrections? Hey, you know what? I'm not sure I even have those. Okay, here they are. All right, no lights are on. Roll call, please.
Councilor Quox?
Aye.
Councilor Burge Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Branch?
Aye.
Councilor Plasky?
Aye.
Councilor Minutelli?
Aye.
Councilor Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Okay, November 5th, 2008, business meeting. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Councilor Plasky?
Just a reminder, on page six, we're talking about the parking places downtown. Adding that to the November workshop, just a reminder to get into the November workshop.
Where are you?
The first, the first Chairman Glennon on the page.
Okay, agreed with Councilor Plasky. Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? I don't see any. Roll call, please.
Councilor Quox?
Aye.
Councilor Burge Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Branch?
Aye.
Councilor Plasky?
Aye.
Councilor Minutelli?
Abstained, absent.
Councilor Carr?
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Okay, we did a, on November 15th, a Saturday, a site walk near Mill Road. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, anything I have is under the very first portion of this, where it says present. This is all the people that were present. Christopher Gazano, is that how you pronounce that?
Gaziano.
Yeah, we should list them as either guest or something. That's the only thing I have. I see no lights. Roll call, please.
Councilor Quox?
Aye.
Councilor Burge Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Branch?
Aye.
Councilor Plasky?
Abstained, absent.
Councilor Minutelli?
Aye.
Councilor Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Now, on the November 19th, I just received mine the other day by email from Erica, and it's not in the packet. Has the council, two questions. One, brought a copy with them tonight. Number two, have you read them? And do we want to move to accept them? Does anybody have them?
I'm good with it.
You're good with it?
Yep.
Okay, motion to accept the November 19th, 2008. What was this? Business meeting?
Workshop.
Workshop.
It should have been a workshop, right?
Yes.
But why it's listed as a business meeting?
So that'll be the first change.
The rest of the page is a workshop.
Yeah, okay. All right, we got a motion? We got a second on it?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? I see none. Roll call.
Councilor Quox?
Aye.
Councilor Burge Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Branch?
Aye.
Councilor Plasky?
Abstained, absent.
Councilor Minutelli?
Aye.
Councilor Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
All right, so we just approved, what, five minutes? Okay, we're going to move on to the public forum, and before we do that, I just want the public to understand, on the agenda this evening, item number one is related to Councilor Quox. Therefore, there will be no discussion in the public forum. That has always been the case. When it's an agenda item, you don't allow, you're not allowed to speak to that item on the agenda. Councilor Branch?
A couple of questions. First one being, while we're in the discussion of this, will you allow the public to speak?
When we get to that portion, I'll address that, because I have some concerns on that.
Okay, and the only other thing is, I've read the rules of procedure, and I do not see anywhere in the town, in the charter or in the rules of procedure where individuals cannot speak at public forum on an agenda item. So I mean, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but I-
Yeah, it's in there, it's in some document.
I'm sorry, where is it?
It's in some document, because I remember Counselor Hart and other council chairs would always bring it up and say, "You cannot address that."
And, you know, Mr. Chairman, I don't dispute that. Having been on the council for a couple of years, I realize that. But there were some emails floating around, and it referenced the rules of procedure, which I could not find it in there.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to say where it has always been in place, we're going to stick to that until we can find something otherwise that indicates that we can't, because it's always been a policy. We don't have it right here in front of us right now, folks. All right. I haven't recognized you. You need to place him up to the podium.
I have a question regarding people's inability to speak.
Okay, can you please state, any of your address?
My name is Eileen Murphy Hammel, and I live at 7 Gonnet Drive here in Newmarket. I want to know if the voter, if the counselors were able to make a motion that said that they would allow the public to speak, and then someone seconded that, and then the council voted on it, our ability to speak, if that could then happen. In other words, you are making a decision, but can the council then make a motion, a councilor make a motion to say, "I make a motion that we allow the public to speak," and then the council, someone seconds it, and then the council then votes on that? If that were to happen, could we then speak?
Well, first of all, I don't make the rules, as you just indicated. You said that they cannot speak. No, I'm following procedures that have been in place since I've been on the council, which is six years.
However, you're unaware of a rule that you can state.
No, I'm not. No, 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 I did not say that. I says, "We have always followed the rule that there are no public comments regarding the agenda item."
You're not showing us the rule.
And you're just blindsiding me tonight by telling me and asking me to show you the rule, which obviously we don't have by here in front of us.
No, we're not, excuse me, we're not blindsiding you. I think Mr. LaBranch had a legitimate question about public being able to speak.
And I would appreciate it if he had asked me that question prior to tonight, so we could have looked it up and had an answer for you tonight. But the protocol has always been, if it's an agenda item, you don't speak to it in the public forum.
Excuse me, I don't mean any disrespect here, but my mother used to say to me, "If everyone else jumped off the bridge, would you do that too?" It might not be correct. There might not be a rule that says that.
So give us the time to find it, to see if it is or if it isn't.
All right.
However, I'm going to, I'm going to address-
Can someone address my question, please?
Yes.
My direct question, which is to the council, is if a counselor makes a motion that says, "Can the people in the town speak?" And someone seconds that, and the council votes on that tonight, can we then speak? Is that procedure?
It's not procedure, because it's public comments, and the chair is the one that runs the meeting. Now, I will address that, Mr. Counselor LaBranch had a question, and I'll answer it now publicly. The public will have had two opportunities to speak to this issue. One was the eve- I, please, you've had two opportunities. The evening in which Jennifer Jobs brought it up, you could, you spoke to it that evening, and there was another opportunity at the business meeting on November, the business meeting in November. That was the public forum there, and you could have spoken to it then. The next opportunity, please, if I have another interruption, I'm going to ask you to leave chambers. I know, you guys, I'm trying to work with you and help, but you've got to give me a chance to respond. Let me just finish here. The public will have an opportunity to speak if the council decides this evening to go forth with an investigation. That's when the public will speak. This evening, it is the council's opportunity to decide, based on what we know, to whether there should be a further investigation. That's where we are with this this evening. And let me address why it is listed the way it is on the agenda. The email's correct. We're flying around the last couple of days saying, "What are they trying to do? They're trying to hide this." And it ain't telling anybody that it's on the agenda. We did, I purposely did not list it as we had our staff meeting, biweekly staff meeting, when we set the agenda. We're not going to list it as the Citizens' Initiative petition, because the Citizens' Initiative petition has been found to be, for the second time, null and void. So we were not addressing the petition. What we were addressing is the issue within the charter, 3.4, qualifications of a counselor. That's why it was set up that way. It was never intended to deceive anybody.
I honestly don't know anything about that, and that was not my question.
I address his concern, and I'm sure some of the public may know that.
But my concern is where you asked for Mr. LaBranch to, you know, show you the respect, to bring you the information ahead of time, so you have a chance to give that information to the public. I think that the public deserves the same respect to know that we have the opportunity to speak about things and are given some advance notice, that we can actually have an opportunity to speak instead of 400 people showing up at a meeting that has to be moved downstairs, and then no one's allowed to talk.
If you know the protocols, which says at a business meeting, you cannot talk about agenda items. That's always been in place. Until we know differently, I want to continue that process.
Is there another counselor that could answer my question? But that's, is that allowed? If someone makes a motion that says, "I think that we should listen to the public," and another counselor seconds it, and the council votes on it, could we then speak? Does anyone else have an answer to that question?
It's actually out of protocol, but you know what? I do not have a problem with that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not taking comments from the council right now. Sorry. Because it's public forum, Mr. Burge Ryan? Mr. Hammel?
Think I need my glasses changed. I'm here as the, to change the tone, I guess. The Newmarket Veterans Memorial Trust Committee would like to honor a certain person tonight that has given us help and guidance when we needed it. So, by the name of Chris Hawkins, would you approach the podium, Chris? And to read the honors is Secretary Rochelle Shopples.
Thank you, Will. Do I still need to do my name and address and?
Yeah, you should, just for the record.
Rochelle Shopples, 10 Lamprey River Park. Certificate of appreciation given to Mr. Christopher Hawkins by the Newmarket Veterans Memorial Trust. The Veterans Memorial Board of Trustees wishes to recognize the leadership role of Christopher Hawkins in the establishment of the Veterans Memorial Trust. Mr. Hawkins shared the concern of many people in New Market regarding the lack of an organization at the town level responsible for overseeing the establishment, maintenance, and improvement of the existing Newmarket Veterans War Memorial Sites. As a town counselor, Mr. Hawkins exhibited selfless leadership for his community and the veterans of New Market by sponsoring and introducing a town ordinance establishing the Newmarket Veterans Memorial Trust. Mr. Hawkins has assisted the trustees in a visionary process to encourage the creation of a new war memorial site to honor all the veterans, all the Newmarket men and women who have served their country. The Newmarket Veterans Memorial Board of Trustees takes great pleasure in recognizing Christopher Hawkins for his relentless leadership and continued guidance to the cause of honoring, recognizing, and expressing appreciation and respect for Newmarket veterans. Presented this December in the year of our Lord 2008 to one Christopher Hawkins by the Newmarket Veterans Memorial Trust, but we need to get a shorter name, Newmarket Veterans Memorial Board of Trustees. It is signed by Janice Rosa, Chair, Robert Gazda, Vice Chair, myself, Rochelle Shopples, Secretary, Treasurer, Wilfred Hammel, Trustee, and Wayne Rosa, Trustee. Thank you so much. I feel like I'm accepting an Academy Award. No, I would also like to, Chris is a very, very busy man, and I would like to also thank him for finding the time and taking the time to come down for this honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just say briefly that it's terrifically humbling to be honored by, or recognized by folks who are themselves giving a very honorable service to the country and to the community, and I'm happy to help in any way I can, and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, real quick, can I read one more thing?
Yeah.
Okay. This past summer, over Old Town Weekend in the Heritage Festival, the Veterans Committee held a fundraiser to raise money to build this such memorial. And at this time, I would like to read the names of the businesses, organizations, and/or persons who donated gift certificates or items toward this raffle. Will Hammel, we have an anonymous donor who donated some cash for a cash prize that, I don't know who this person is, but they obviously do, so thank you. Rosa Construction, Bob Turcot of Turcot Remodeling, Riverworks Restaurant and Tavern, Carpenter's Greenhouse, Phil Mitchell of Seacoast Chimney Suite, Alan Mitchell of Homestead Woodworking, Prue Oil and Propane, Rockingham Gas, who still to me is on Jerry Ave, but that's the old Getty Station for some of us townies that still relate to Rockingham Gas, Cruzex Garage, Floral Ventures, KJ's Bola Mania, Optima Day Spa, Panzanellas, American Legion Post 67, Subway at Evans Mart, Keith Reeske, and Apple Door Real Estate. We also had some very nice corporate donations towards our building memorial, and that is Cheney East Corporation, Jablonski Painting and Wallpaper, Ron Lemire Insurance Agency, as well as many others that helped by buying raffle tickets or just giving a personal donation. And we want, on behalf of the committee, I would like to thank everyone for doing what they did. Thank you.
Mrs. Shopples? I just, I believe I got an email from the chair, your chair, of the Veterans Memorial, and wanted to know if we would put on the agenda workshop in December a design concert?
I think it was January.
Was it January?
January workshop.
Yeah, we will put it on there. I don't think I responded to you, but it will be on that agenda.
For, oh, the conceptual design there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, it's Representative Abbott.
I'm sorry.
Just because today we went to Concord, and we were sworn in, and I am starting my seventh term, and I'll take this opportunity to thank the people here, thank the people at Newmarket for re-electing me to serve for a seventh time in Concord. The reason I am here tonight, well, first of all, let me just quote Mark Twain, who said, "No man's life, liberty, or property is safe while the legislature is in session." So keep that in mind. It probably could be said that no man's life, liberty, or property is safe when the town council is in session also. Reason I am here tonight is to quote Mark Twain again. If you don't read the newspaper, you are uninformed, and if you do read the newspaper, you may be misinformed. But I read the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, and I saw an issue regarding gravel pit applications. And it concerned me as a legislator that how did the state put one of my citizens, call it in jeopardy, of, after having received a permit. So as part of my duties, I felt that I should go to Concord and look into the issue. In doing that, I asked two questions of my legislative researcher, who also consulted with other folks in Concord. I asked two questions. I said, "What do the statutes require three public postings?" I asked the second question, "Is having another public hearing appropriate, given the time elapsed since the grant of the permit?" Which, again, reading the newspaper, I understand it's two years ago. I have had no contact with the people involved in this issue, but only look at it as a legislator. I'm also reminded that some years ago, I was working in my yard, and I broke my glasses. I scratched the glass so severe, I couldn't see through it, and I went to my optometrist, where I bought my glasses, and I asked to have a new lens put in immediately. And they says, looked at my records, says, "No, you can't." I says, "Why not?" He says, "Because we haven't examined your eyes in the past two years." I said, "What do you mean?" He says, "Well, that's the law." I says, "That can't be the law." So I went back, I did some research, and I found out that while I was in the legislature, we passed a law that says if your eyes haven't been examined in the past two years, you have to have them done. So again, we do things in the legislature sometimes that we probably shouldn't do. What I found in examining the statute was that there are nine places in law where three posting places are required. Most of them deal with school, cooperative schools and the like, where there are multi-districts, and I have them, and I've provided the administrator this evening, again, I just received this today, with the information that I've received that he can make copies for you if you're interested. So in nine places, we require three public postings. And the answer to my question was, by the people in Concord, was that the requirement for three public places for posting of notice is inconsistent with land use law, budgetary, public hearing requirements, and the town meeting warrant requirements. I remember some years ago, when the town had a special town meeting, and they didn't post it correctly. They missed the day count. And I went to Concord, filed legislation, and validated the actions taken by the town. Didn't require you to conduct another town meeting, just as I don't feel that we should be conducting another meeting regarding a gravel pit permit, which has the odd, oddity of having three public postings. Our filing period for legislation expired last week, but the Senate's filing period is still open, and I intend to file legislation to change that requirement back to two, where it should belong. And no one really knows why it's three. And I might ask the council, where is the third public posting place in the town of Newmarket beyond the library and the post office?
Town Hall.
I believe that there's also a requirement in all things that at the meeting place you do have a public posting. That's an additional requirement. So again, I am concerned that we find ourselves looking into things such as this, when we can administratively take care of things. There is no public harm that has been done here. The second thing I asked is having another public hearing appropriate, given the time elapsed since the, since the permit. And the answer to that was, regarding holding another public hearing, this could involve issues of municipal estoppel and latches. There are statutory revisions to legalize town meeting procedural defects, et cetera and et cetera. And it really boils down to saying that if there's no harm, no foul. So I just asked that the town consider what it's doing. I also have the issue, some questions that I would have, is why did you go and look for this error? Did you look at every public posting in the last two years? Every public posting in the last two years regarding all public hearings? I think that that's something that should be answered. I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Newmarket that you're going back in history and looking at things. Are we safe? Are we safe in this town? I'm really concerned about that in representing this community, the actions that I've seen taken. I don't like going places and having to answer for what goes on in this community and in this council. I think that it's fair, what's fair for one should be fair for- I think that it's fair, what's fair for one should be fair for all, but there is something wrong here. And that's why I looked into this requirement, and I think that you should read it, and I think that you should let it go to bed, and I'll take care of the administrative part of it, as I have done for the town and other issues. And I thank you very much for your time.
Any other public comments, Mrs. Jarvis?
Ms. Jarvis, Seven Raymond Lane. Members of the town council, on November 21st of 2008, I received a letter from Attorney Bruton, which stated that Attorney Radigan, who represents Counselor Quacks, was challenging the validity of the initiative petition. It is the contention of Counselor Quacks that the initiative petition can only be used to initiate ordinances. However, the town charter, Section 8.2 Initiative Petition, states that the council shall hold a public hearing and act by taking a vote on the merits of every initiative petition, which concerns a matter in which the town is empowered to act. This section does not specify ordinances. The charter was originally reviewed by the New Hampshire Attorney General's Office, Secretary of State, and Department of Revenue Administration. The final report of the Newmarket Charter Commission states, "Throughout the year, town government must be responsive to the individual citizen." The charter guarantees the right to be heard by the council, to petition legislation and referenda of council action. Counselor Quacks' attorney makes reference to RSA 49C 33. Optional provisions, limitations. This RSA is referenced by RSA 49D 3E, Local Option Town Charters, stating that citizen powers of initiative, referendum, and recall, as described in RSA 49C, which reads, "City charters may include provisions relating to any or all of the following matters: initiative procedures whereby voters may initiate ordinance by petition, require consideration of the petition ordinance by the elected body, and failing satisfactory consideration require a referendum to enact the ordinance. Did the town have the right in crafting the town charter to allow the citizens of Newmarket to bring by petition a matter in which the town is empowered to act? Towns act on matters other than ordinances. Did the town have the right to afford its citizens to bring other matters in addition to ordinances to the council? The law requires towns at a minimum to allow the citizens to bring petitions to act upon an ordinance. Does this in some way prohibit towns from allowing citizens additional rights to be heard by the council? If citizens are not permitted to petition, how are they guaranteed the right to be heard by the council on matters other than ordinances? Is the present petition not lawful because the matter may not be lawfully passed? Or is the present petition not lawful because the town council is prohibited from acting on a petition which is not specifically addressing an ordinance? In which case, does this mean our town charter is not legal? Did the town council violate state law when it acted on previous petitions that were unrelated to ordinances? Hopefully, all of this can be addressed and made clear, so that our town charter accurately and/or more clearly sets forth the processes. Thank you for your time. I look forward to your public response to my questions.
Mrs. Jarvis, would you provide a copy of that to Mr. Wenalski?
Sure.
At this point, my only concern, again, here is that this, how does the council want to handle this? Because some of this is related to what our attorney has said, and Mrs. Quacks' attorney, and I'm not demeaning you at all, but you not being attorney, we've got this from two attorneys and two law firms that told us that it's not valid. I guess I'm questioning why you're questioning it. So, I guess we need to send this over to someone to look at.
So, you'd like me to send the letter, so you can have another attorney look at the letter?
No.
I'm not trying to make a joke.
No, no. No. What I'm trying to come to a rationalization here is, does the council want to send this request to our legal counsel, which is FX? And I hesitate to do that, because the perception that I've been hearing, and I'm sure some of the other counselors may have been hearing the same thing, is, why is a citizen who's doing a petition, and the cost to the taxpayers, is paying for that? And that's what you're asking, this legal question, and our attorney, if they look at it. But I guess in this case, it might be different, because he made statements, and you're asking on those questions whether they're legal or not. I guess that's a little bit different. Okay. I can see that now.
I guess my question would be, I would think that counselors would know the answers to this, that you wouldn't need to ask your attorney. These, I would think, would be questions that you, as counselors, would have already asked the town attorney, when you were told that the petition was not legal, when according to our town charter, it is. So, if the town counselors are not questioning our town charter and the legality of the town charter, then why are they questioning the legality of this petition, which goes along with the town charter?
It was not the council who questioned it. It was Mrs. Quacks, who brought it to her attorney. Her attorney contacted FX Bruton, the town's attorney. They both agreed that the petition was invalid. We, as counselors, will seek the advice of our legal counsel. We are also told that there are no provisions within the state RSAs, and the state RSAs, my understanding is, trumps anything that the local governments would have in their charters. And that's how that was explained to us.
So, are you saying that, so you're feeling that you're unable to answer these questions?
Some of them are more legal, I think.
Okay.
Yes.
So, if I, but I'm going to turn these in, and I'm going to expect answers back for them, and I have the right to ask for the answers to my questions. So, I will send this to the town administrator, and I will wait for answers. I'm surprised, quite frankly, I'm surprised that you don't know some of these answers.
Well, second to that, we don't normally respond to public comments. However, I'm doing this now, because I don't want you to walk away thinking that we're going to ignore you.
Well, I appreciate that.
That's the reason why I'm saying, let's talk about it on the council side, and see whether we want to send it over. How do we get those answers for you?
Okay. So, you're going to discuss it now?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if we're going to discuss it right this minute, but we will discuss it. Yeah. Okay. I want the public to finish speaking, if I could.
It's basically to deal with this last comment.
Okay.
My question. I just would like to make it clear that as far as seven counselors being up here, I know that the majority of us, I believe all of us, received the opinion on the evening of our meeting. So, it's kind of difficult, you know, in defense of the council, it is difficult to react when you're just handed a piece of paper. So, you know, I'm asking that you respect that and understand that, you know, we don't have questions. We're not lawyers. So, you know, that's the first statement I'd like to make. As far as getting the answers to the questions, quite honestly, I'd prefer to see if we can get a third party involved here, only because I don't know if LGC is somebody that we can utilize for this, that may point us in the right direction. But, you know, we get opinions from legal, and then the opinions that legal give us are changed. So, I'm asking that we get a third party to give us the answers to these questions, if that is possible. And that's really all I want to say on the comments.
And at this point, I would have to concur with that, because I have some reservations coming from the attorneys we, the attorney of the town has right now. That's, I have some concerns on that. And she's next, and then I'll let you go.
Counselor Quacks, I'm sorry.
Actually, I believe Ms. Jarvis's questions have been answered in the letter she got November 21st from the town attorney, and I can't see spending more money on this. It's, we have, we have a letter here that is public document that Jen Jarvis received, and in it, it explains why it is not valid.
Okay. One second.
Well, two things. One was, I was wondering if that letter is available to the public yet?
Which one?
The one that was forwarded to the, to the petitioner.
Yes, that was made available right away.
So, that's public documents, so that's available at town hall.
Yeah. Somebody requested it today, and they received it.
And question number two is, and this is more for the town administrator, because Counselor LeBranch alluded to it, and I think it's a good idea. Does LGC have staff attorneys available to provide? I know that we pay fees to LGC, and one of the concerns is, we're spending taxpayer dollars, et cetera, et cetera. Included in our fees that we pay to LGC on an annual basis, do we have access to their staff attorneys who might render an opinion on this issue?
Yes, we do.
So, it would minimize the cost to taxpayers, it would give a third, a third-party opinion?
But they may also say that there is, if there are specific questions, they would say, "You need to talk with your own legal counsel regarding it." But in the broad scope, they could.
Okay. Thank you.
Last one.
And also, in regards to any legalities in the town charter, I believe there are other portions in the charter that technically would not be binding, so maybe we should get a charter commission together and look over the existing charter as it is, and see what is viable and what isn't.
Okay. Any other public comments? Ms. Capela. Ma'am, I'm only going to let the people, ma'am, I'm not sure what your name was.
Hamel.
Mrs. Hamel. I only selected her because she hadn't spoken yet. We'll get those people, and then we'll go back to the second round, okay? You're welcome.
I left my house watching this at the point where you were explaining to the public the difference between the, having the agenda item in the public comments on something. So, if I miss something in between my travel between here and there, don't, just stop me and say, "We already discussed it." Lauren Cabrioli, 40, River Ben Road. You mentioned, and one of the reasons that motivated me to get up and leave, is you mentioned that past chairmans have not allowed public to speak on agenda items. And I just want to clarify, at least from my perspective, when I was a chair, that I understood that, I know where you're coming from, I understood that to be that if there was a public comment opportunity on an agenda item, like a public hearing on an ordinance, or we're allowing public comment on something that we wanted opinion on that was on the agenda, then we did not duplicate it in the public comment section. And that's how I have always understood the rule, and I just thought that might add some light to the confusion.
But you do understand that it is the privy of the chair to allow comments?
Absolutely. And that was my next comment.
Thank you.
And I just want it out there, because you bring that up quite frequently, that no comments are allowed on agenda items, and past chairs have done that. So, thank you, Dana.
Thank you. Mrs. Rosa.
Janice Rosa, Rodley Falls Road. I have a question. I received the procedures, protocol, the resolution that was passed by the town council back in August, and I have a question for all my seven town counselors here. Was it your intention, when you signed that resolution, not to allow the public to speak? I would like a hand show of the counselors who signed that resolution, who may have felt that meant the public could not speak.
At what portion of the meeting?
At your, you, all seven of you signed that resolution in August, which is a protocols.
No, I know that. But you're asking the question, was it the council's intention not to allow you to speak?
Yes.
My question back to you was, at what portion of the meeting are you talking about? Are you talking public comments?
I'm talking at all your meetings, because it seems if you have, Dana, you used to be able to come to a public hearing, and you used to have, people used to be able to address the items at a business meeting on the, on the agenda. That, yes, it was, and we have other.
You mean in the public forum, or on the agenda?
No, if it was on the agenda, people could address the items. Now, you've gone to, now you go to a workshop. People aren't supposed to address things in a workshop either. So, when is the public going to be allowed to speak ever, on any item? Not just this item of Mrs. Quacks that they're discussing, but any item, if no one can discuss anything on an agenda item.
Okay. Usually, when the public can speak, is when there's an ordinance and there's a public hearing. Usually, if those are public hearings for, like I just said, ordinances or things like that, that would be passed. It has always been up to the discretion of the chair to allow public comments.
I understand, but I also would like a show of hands from our town counselors, when they signed that resolution for protocols, if you thought you were limiting the people's right to speak at any times for any meetings. Because if you read the protocols that were sent out, it goes about people speaking, and I just don't think that our counselors believe that to shut out the public. And you're, and I'm trying to be polite to you, Dana, but to be honest with you, I don't want to name-call, but look through history and see some of the dictators, because you cannot keep shutting out the public, and you've been shutting us out. I'm sure if this was about Rosa Construction, the gravel pits, you would allow the public to get up and slam us.
Uh, excuse me.
Okay. So, wait, excuse me, I got the floor right now, and yes, you are the chair, but these people have come out, 421 people signed a petition, and you're saying you've already spoken. And I don't remember that you gave anybody a lot of time to speak on anything. One time, it was a three-minute discussion that the counselors had about trying to allow the people to give them the right to speak. I guess I'd just like to see a show of hands from our counselors right now, of who believes that the public should have a vote, you know, the right to speak on items.
Could you repeat that? Say it again?
I, I don't.
I'd like to know our counselors.
Very vague, yeah.
I'm very vague? Well, you know what? You're vague a lot of times, too.
Do not insult any member of this council.
When you deserve the, when you deserve the taxpayers' respect, you'll get it, Dana.
Listen, one more outburst like that, I'm going to ask you to leave chambers.
You can ask me to leave, but I'm not going.
You will be escorted out. Would you please?
Did you ask me to leave?
Yes. I'm asking her to leave now.
I haven't said anything.
You made a comment back there, and I've asked you not to make any comments.
Comment. They never heard you.
You made a comment, because I heard your voice from here.
Oh, for God's sakes, Dana, you know what? Why don't you resign?
Down there, we're speaking.
Please go ahead. I'm sorry for the interruption.
Again, my name is Eileen Murphy-Hamel, and I live in Seven Gone and Drive.
I, please, quiet in chambers. Somebody's at the podium, and they wish to speak.
I have a comment and a question for Mr. Wenalski. Apparently, at a meeting that I saw on television, the petition that 412 citizens brought to this town council was acceptable by Attorney Bruton. Is that what happened? When you asked him to say, "Is this a legal petition? Can it be submitted to the council?"
The petition that I forwarded over to him to review with the signatures on it, he responded back that it was valid. He had sent a letter to the council indicating that it was appropriate for the council to act on it.
Okay. Then, did he then require Mrs. Quacks' attorney to instruct him that he was wrong on that?
He didn't inquire regarding that. He had received a phone call from the counselor's attorney, indicating that based upon the RSA, that it was only limited to an ordinance, petition for an ordinance. And upon his review, he indicated that that was the only, that was the only way that the council could deal with it, and therefore, in his opinion, the petition was no longer valid.
So, 412 people who signed a petition are not able to have any recourse, or not, we're not, it's just, we're just, we're just not allowed to have our petition or deserve any kind of, I can't think of the legal term, any kind of satisfaction, reparation, I don't know what it is, but recourse. I mean, what do the people who have serious legitimate concerns about some of the actions of this, these counselors, what is our recourse? What do we do?
Okay. I'll answer that. Okay. What it is, is that the petition was bonded in a void. However... However, it was a recommendation of the attorney to have the council have a conversation, and to decide to whether an investigation should be done. So that process still is in play.
Oh, okay.
That's still in play. That's what we're going to do tonight. But the petition itself became null and void, based on the two attorneys coming together, as explained to Mrs. Jarvis in her letter, and as it was explained to the council. However, he did say, "I would recommend you put it on the agenda," which is why it's on the agenda for discussion tonight, to whether the council wants to take further action and do an investigation. Okay? And what I'm going to do this evening is allow Mrs. Quacks, Councilor Quacks, to respond to those alleged allegations, because she's not had the due process of answering those questions. And before the council tonight makes the decision to whether to investigate or not, all we have is Mrs. Jarvis's alleged allegations, but we haven't heard from her.
You've heard from her attorney.
We haven't heard from her. We haven't heard from her on those accusations. So she will have that opportunity tonight. Then, the council will go into discussion to whether they wish to have an investigation or not. That's where we are tonight.
Okay, my, my second point is, follows from the first one, but it's that if this is not like a new issue, this has been going on since, I don't know the date.
October.
Since October. An Attorney Bruton was not aware of the legal advice that he was given, then that's seriously concerning to me, that we as a town are paying a man, or, or a legal firm, to represent us, that is, needs instruction.
Yeah, and I believe that's why Council LaBranch is recommending, suggesting that we go through the LGC, Local Government Center, and their staff attorneys to ask some of those questions that Mrs. Jarvis had this evening. And, because I, I'm not going to speak for the council, but I certainly am one of those councilors, that when I saw, or read the letter from FX that the council had received, I was stunned. But I said to myself, "We're paying this attorney, we've been paying this attorney for 25 years, and he saw the petition twice, and it went to him three times, and we're getting this back." And I, I don't understand why he didn't see it, and I'm not going to try to, you know, say he's a bad attorney, or anything like that, I just, I have the question myself, why and how did that happen? Absolutely. And the taxpayers paid for that.
And my last point is, is simply that there was an editorial by the newspaper in Exeter, the Exeter Newsletter, that basically spoke about, and I can't talk about the words verbatim, but that this town has a lot of business that needs to be done, with regard to schools, mills.
Water.
Water district. And I sincerely hope that we can get to some of that business that we need to get to, but not at the expense of not hearing what 412 citizens of this town would like addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Jarvis and Hamel, went up first.
Just quickly, three things. As a former chair, I'd also like to echo what Laurie Caprioli said, Jen Jarvis, 7 Raymond Lane, that as, it is the chair's discretion, and in the past, we have, in the past when I was chair, we allowed public comment during the public meetings, during the business meetings. The public forum was for things that weren't on the agenda item, because we allowed them to speak to the agenda item when we were discussing the agenda item. But then we never allowed public comment during the workshops, because those were the times when we were actually discussing it as a council. And you, the second thing is, you had made the, the comment that you don't make the rules, but you keep saying that you are the one that decides on when the public can speak. And that is true, you are the one. So you can entertain public comment if you decide to do so. So that's, I just want to clarify that.
But I just also, if I could add to that, that there have been times where you have not allowed the public to speak also, in your trimester.
If you want to look that up, that's fine. But I'm saying, as a protocol, we would allow, that's why it says "non-agenda items only," because you're allowed to speak on agenda items during that time. And the last thing I'd like to say is that, you said you didn't want to ignore me, or make me feel slighted, and I am starting to feel a little slighted, because a citizen was just walked out of this town council for insulting the chairman, where a town counselor, a representative of this town, sat there and called me the anti-Christ, and no one on this council, except for Jim Bergeron, made a statement about it. But, but my point is, is that you as chair never called him out of order. He never apologized, and you have the nerve to throw somebody out of this audience. So I'd like you to think about that.
Mrs. McNeil?
I sure have a lot to say, but I know I'm not allowed to say it right now. And I don't want to go against protocol. Heavens to Betsy, I never want to go against. But I wonder, when a citizen of the town has been defamed by certain people up here, that we do not have a chance to say what we want to say? May I ask when I can speak?
We got.
On this matter? You, you said the public can't speak.
Not to an agenda item and the public forum.
Well, when does that change, that, that I can speak someday? Before, you know, the end of the year? When would you say you're going to have the next meeting?
No, no, what we'll do, we'll decide tonight, I'll ask the council what their thoughts are, and allowing the public to speak. However, as I said, they had, when Mrs. Jarvis brought up the alleged accusations then, and then there was another public forum that, in November, and nobody spoke to it, if the council does decide, and I want to make this very clear to the council and to the public, if the council should decide to have an investigation, there will be a point where the public will be allowed to speak.
Well, I hope that comes pretty soon. And if you want to take my tax dollar and get this straightened out, I'll be glad that you can have my taxes.
Believe me, we want to get it taken care of.
I do hope so.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. McNeil.
Rochelle Shopples, 10 Lamprey River Park. When we do get to this point, to the point of discussing the agenda, and you said you're going to be taking, the council will be taking a vote on whether you're going to go forward with this investigation. Will Counselor Quacks be able to vote in that issue?
No.
Thank you.
No. Nope. Mrs. Rosa?
Sally Rosa, New Market, New Hampshire, Watley Falls Road. When we are allowed to speak, are you going to limit us to three minutes? Because that's certainly, at that very first meeting, that was a limit.
Yes.
Way back in October.
No, the reason for that.
Who could get anything out in three minutes?
The reason for that was, it was a large room with a large audience. Tonight, I don't have any problem with a five-minute limit.
No, but the next time, you're saying, when this comes up again?
Oh, in the public?
Yes.
That would probably be a vote of the council, I think we'll throw it out to them, if it goes into a public hearing, but normally it's either three or five minutes.
Really?
Yeah. Okay.
Well, go for the longer, rather than the three minutes, because we all have something to say. I have a lot to say.
Yeah, well, let me just.
I have a lot to say, and I'm not going to be limited to three minutes, really.
Well, let me just tell you this, if there is an investigation, the question to the legal team is going to be, should it be, can it be, and should it be only to the issues relating to the accusations made by Mrs. Jarvis, and not other people saying, "Well, you know, she did this to me two years ago, three years ago, this happened to me," and so on and so forth. That's the question that's going to be asked to the legal team. But just to give a heads up, because I know you have a big history.
There's a history here.
Yes, and I want to be sure that we're going to address the Mrs. Jarvis's issues.
Okay.
If it comes to that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other public comments? Okay, I see none, I'll close it at eight o'clock. Now, Mr. Bergeron, your lights been on.
If I may, I have a document before me, it's the resolution that we passed in August 6, 2008. It's an addendum to, it's, it's related to the establishment of rules for council proceedings.
Mm-hmm.
And it specifically does answer a couple of the questions that were asked. Do you mind if I read?
Tell me where you are, so we're being the same thing.
Section 12, permission to address the council.
Here, my phone, please, you can mic phone.
I'm sorry, can you hear me? To me, it's loud. Okay, permission to address the council.
I haven't got, I didn't get it.
Do you mind if I can leave off my? Persons other than members of the council and town officers shall be permitted to address the council outside of public forum at the sole discretion of the chair. Comments by members of the public outside of public forum shall be confined to the topic at hand, and shall be limited to no more than five minutes without the chair's prior consent. The speaker shall not enter into a debate with any person, chairman, or council member. And one other section, section 13, to suspend the rules, these rules may be temporarily suspended by a vote of a majority of the members present and voting.
No, no, I saw that. This is what he's talking about now. Okay. Thank you.
Let me put this down, hang on, I don't need this right now.
Okay, at this point, let's find them on the agenda. Okay. Counselor, exercise of authority on section 3.4, qualification of counselors, should say per the town charter. And that is basically what Mrs. Jarvis's allegations and letters she read to the council back on the October business meeting is referring to. So at this point, like I said earlier, Mrs. Quacks has not had the opportunity to at least answer the allegations that have been put forth by Mrs. Jarvis. So at this point, I'm going to give her the opportunity to address those items that were put into the petition, even though the petition is not valid, but it's still listed there. And at this point, after that, the council will have discussion to whether it wants to move forward with an investigation. And I'm going to ask the please, the audience to please be quiet during this process, please, so everybody can hear. Mrs. Quacks, please go.
Regarding qualification of counselors, it's section 3.4 that my attorney alluded to, and there are, there's certain criteria regarding a qualification of counselors. And if you're convicted of a federal state of crime, if you declare a vacancy, if a council member has missed three regularly scheduled meetings in sequence without leave of the council, has missed one-third of all meetings within a calendar year without leave of the council, has interfered with administration, falsified records, misapplied town funds of property, are as guilty of public conduct, the result of which would bring loss of respect for the council of the town of New Market.
That's the one.
Please, please be quiet.
Now, in regards to the petition, one of the things listed was interference with town administrator. That is one of the things listed under qualifications of counselors under section 3.4. I have not, nor has this council received any information from the town administrator that I have interfered with administrative duties. As far as public conduct, the result of which would bring loss of respect for the council of the town of New Market, she alludes to the fact that, I believe it was my phone call regarding the flag. Now that was not a town counselor calling anyone up and saying, "I have, I'm offended by that flag." Someone in town, a constituent called me, and I called on their behalf. And if you don't want councilors up here to do anything on behalf of the constituents, then maybe someone else should run for council. Now, in regards to my personal feelings against Jen Jarvis, I, I have the right, as a town counselor, as any board or committee member does, to voice their opinions. It's a First Amendment right. And if everybody took offense in regards to what every council set up here, regarding being in favor of something and not being in favor of something, then we wouldn't, and they should be dismissed for it, we would never have a quorum. We would never. In regards, another one of the accusations is that the permit, I have a report here on the permit that Jen Jarvis got, I looked through her file, and she got a permit for her building on December 1, '05, I believe it was, to have the work done on her building. She never got the work done, and it took approximately, it was two and a half years, two years and two months. She got the permit in 12, 1, '05, by RAS renovations, to do approximately $1,000 worth of work on her property. She never utilized that permit as far as, according to what Mr. Vincent told me, and as the record shows. And it was two years and two months since the permit was issued. Well, a permit normally expires in 180 days. But Mr. Vincent is a good code enforcement officer, and especially with people who don't know the rules, he tends to extend permits. The, technically, Eric Weston had to get another, I believe it's New River Construction, and he went down two years and two months later, and he had to get another permit after he had already started the work, on February 20th. It was paid on February 21st, I believe, another $25, because the scope of the work has, had changed from $1,000 worth of work to now, I believe it stated, construction cost to $20,000. And also, up in the upper right-hand corner of the scope of work, in Mr. Vincent writing, is received 20 February '07, requires Heritage Commission review and comments. That is nothing that came from me or anyone else up here, those are remarks from Mr. Vincent in his own writing on the permit. In regards to the town employees, and me asking to know whether or not anyone down the town hall, the town dump, received cash. This council passes policies, and we had forensic audit, as you're all aware of, and we enacted certain policies. And one of the policies was that there was to be no cash accepted at the town dump. I asked several times, in public, probably three or four meetings, to have the sign down at the dump to state that no cash was accepted. It took a good three or four months to get that signed up, and that policy was passed in July. With that saying, someone told me that someone down there had accepted cash. I reported that to the town administrator, as a citizen, a counselor, or anyone should do, if they know it's against town policy. I informed him, there was a police investigation, I have the police report regarding that. The individual did accept cash. I gave that to Mr. Winowski, and he took care of it. Regarding other situations with town employees, I was made aware of certain things two or three different times, and again, I brought that to Mr. Winowski's attention. Regarding the stone wall, and again, all these things that I'm mentioning do not even fit the criteria of 3.4 for disqualification of counselors. I would like you to re- I would like you to remember that. In regards to the wall outside, it's an allegation that I called planning board and code enforcement about the wall. Well, what if I did? But as it turns out, I didn't. Even if I did, I would not be in violation to call someone up and ask a question, I don't believe. Dan Vincent called me, and he could clarify that simply with Mr. Winowski's permission to write a statement, to come here and say that I did not call him regarding the stone wall being put out on the Beach Street Extension. He called me. And I have a statement from Diane Hadi stating that I did not call her either. I mean, it's allegations that are, I feel, personal, and I have a right to voice my opinion as to who I feel that if I want to vote no. Every time someone up here votes no, they have to be held accountable because people don't like your opinion. We're entitled to have opinions. You might not agree with them all, but we're entitled to them. We don't agree with each other on every vote that we have up here. We didn't agree with each other when we were on planning board, but you're entitled to those opinions. And that is not any reason to have a counselor disqualified, absolutely not. I believe that is it.
Would you go back to, I don't know if you have a copy of the...
Yeah.
Go back to see when approached the public works group while they were working on Beach Street Extension, and questioned them on, no, I'm sorry, D. When she told the town administrator to supply her with the cash receipts for the transfer station to verify if the town employee were not stealing.
Again, that is a mis... The way that was stated, that I'm going around accusing someone of stealing, I was not. There was a police report on this, and I just brought the information to the town administrator. And he was aghast, and he said, "I will look into it," and he had Chief Sears look into it. She's trying to phrase it here, that I'm going around saying, "Employees are stealing." I didn't do that. I informed the town administrator that we had a policy that was not being enforced by an employee, and I brought that to his attention.
Okay, regarding the cash receipts, transfer, what's it called? It implies that you were, you requested copies of that, which, when you look at it, it's public record. Anybody in the public could have asked for that, those records. So, I just want to make that clear. Okay, so, counselors, I'm sure you haven't heard of this, so I didn't want to give her that opportunity to respond to those allegations. And the council... Part of my concern here is that the public is going to have an opportunity to speak if the council should decide to do an investigation. And that's very clear, we know that, because we've already asked that through the epex, the legal team. So, all right, Counsel LeBranche.
Well, no, I guess, it was my understanding, and I'm not sure if I'm treading on thin ice here when discussing legal discussions that we had, but it was my understanding that, under an investigation, I guess it would be similar to what has happened in Northwood, where theoretically, the public does not speak at the investigation. It's strictly, it's more of a, as they put it, more of a court appearance where you have...
Cross-examination.
Exactly. So, you know, I guess, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, to the extent that I don't believe that the public would be able to speak at an investigation. And I may be wrong, and, you know, correct me if I am wrong, please.
Yeah, they have to be, according to our charter, you have to be sworn in and so forth and so on.
I was on the impression they wouldn't be able to speak.
They could give testimonies, which is...
No. Who would speak would be the people that are directly involved in the allegations.
Right, and those are the people who should be speaking.
Well, I know, but I think the question was about public, the public speaking, so there are two different issues there.
Right. Public and people that would be related to these incidents, alleged incidents, we're talking two different people here, really. And I guess that's what I want to clever, because, you know, whatever happens this evening, I don't want the public to feel that, okay, there's no investigation, so it's all over, or there's an investigation, now I'll be able to speak, when in fact, they will not be.
And you know that for a fact, because I thought it was the other way around.
Correct me if I'm wrong, please, I mean...
No. Counselor Plasky.
I agree with Counselor LeBranche.
Okay, so that was your understanding, that it would be more like a...
Yes, that it would be more like a court proceeding, where uninvolved people would not have a chance to get up and, and add their opinions. It's a matter of fact-finding, and that fact-finding would be from people involved in the case.
Okay.
Which would be Mrs. Jarvis...
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement officer.
Any staff person.
Diane Hadi, staff person, any other staff person involved.
Okay.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
And also, if people have, want to discuss things that they are unhappy with about any council up here, they can do it in any public comment section, as long as it's not in the agenda. Tonight, it's not on the agenda. Come back at the next meeting when there's public comment and speak your piece.
All right, no more, please, people. We need to get order here, I'm sorry. At this point, what are the council's thoughts on public comments this evening?
Right now.
Yeah. And we're going to have to put some type of limit. I know it says five minutes, but that can be broken also. Only... Yeah, well, I'm just amassing the council. And it has to be to these specific issues here only. Is that the council's wishes on that? All right.
You need a motion?
Yeah, I was going to ask for that here.
Counselor Bergeron's light, yes, no?
Is that what your light's on for?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to allow public comment on agenda item one this evening.
Relating to the allegations.
Relating to the allegations against Counselor Quacks.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. And do you want to change the time limit to three minutes, five minutes?
I'd like that to be five minutes.
All right, okay.
Should we amend the motion?
Yeah, we're going to have to do that, amend that motion. And somebody who have a second, you'll have to...
I'd make the motion for five minutes.
I amend the motion to make it for five full minutes, per person.
I do not second along with that. I would like a friendly amendment to that, that no person be allowed to speak more than once. That way, we have a time limitation.
Okay.
Is that acceptable, Counselor?
Are you saying five minutes, but only one time to speak?
Only one time.
Yeah, that's how I...
Fair enough, only one exception.
All right, any discussion on that? Roll call. Counselor Quacks.
Aye.
Counselor Bergeron.
Aye.
Counselor LeBranche.
Aye.
Counselor Plasky.
Aye.
Counselor Minnetelli.
Aye.
Counselor Carr.
Aye.
Chairman Glennon. Aye. So, let's do this in a orderly fashion. I'll open it up to a public comment, and it'll be, as the council has requested, five minutes. You don't have to use all five. There's no sharing of minutes, I'm sorry. And one chance to speak. On agenda item, relating to the allegations, I'm sorry. Who wants to go first?
Well, I've got something to say, but...
Well, come on up, Mrs. McNeil.
It's not only about her, it's about one or two others up there. You don't want me to talk?
It can only be about this issue.
Oh, I'm Martha McNeil, 10A Swamp Road. I think everybody knows me. After many days of soul-searching about events that have ensued in our town council, I must state my feelings on this issue. I'm amazed at the vindictive things that have been said by supposedly intelligent people who the citizens of New Market voted into office. Shame on you, Roseanne, for publicly humiliating, criticizing, and bringing up and found, at that time, accusation against a citizen who only wanted to volunteer to serve on a town committee. I didn't realize an FBI investigation was requested. If you had an issue with Ms. Jarvis, couldn't you have spoken to her privately? Or did this not serve your purpose? Shame on you, Mike Plasky, now here I'm going off the subject, for calling Ms. Jarvis an antichrist. Ben Loudon is an antichrist, not Ms. Jarvis. I believe you engage your mouth before your brain on that one.
All right, let's not be insulted.
Now, okay, that's what I say, you want me to cut that out?
Well, you already said it.
I already said it. Well, I had something to say about you, but I guess that would be struck from the record too, right?
I don't know.
Okay. Here I go.
If it's not insulting to counselors.
Well, I don't think it's insulting, it's what they've said that really hurt me. And you, Chairman Glennon, could have called out of order several times and have stopped this whole thing. Because you know that a citizen was being humiliated by Chairman Plasky and also by Chairman Quack.
No, counselors, I'm the chair.
Well, yeah, pardon me, counselor, okay? So, I'll go on here. And I know this probably isn't okay either, but you even called our town administrator on the carpet, and I'm very proud of Mr. Ed, because he stood there and took it, and he really came up with answers. And I think that was uncalled for. Now, concerning a second petition of the, that the seniors, the first one, it was kind of insinuated that we didn't know what we were signing, and we were kind of, you know, far out there. But there isn't one senior citizen that signed that petition that did not know what they were signing. And they...
Who said they didn't?
Well, I can't go into that, you know. And so, they are very, very interested in what is going on here. And the way I feel about this thing, I hope that this issue can be resolved. As a citizen of New Market who had faith in you and voted you in, I'm very saddened by what has transpired. My, my congratulations to Councilman LeBranche, Bergeron, and Minnetelli for standing up for what is right. The town council members should work for all citizens of New Market with no favoritism, and they should show more love in their actions. If we can't come together as a town, how are we going to come together as a nation? So, I thank you for letting me speak. I could say more, but I'm not supposed to.
Anybody else? Mrs. Jarvis?
I would just ask that if you do move forward with an investigation, that you all do your own fact-finding. And I'm not going to address all of the misquotes that Counselor Quacks has said tonight, but I will say that if you do your own fact-finding, you'll find out that I have two roofs, and I did repair both of them at two separate times, which is why I had two petitions. So, I would hope that you would all do your own fact-finding, and that you would move forward on the investigation so that you could make your own decisions with the facts that you find yourself. Okay?
Any other comments? Mrs. Hamel?
I would like to ask that if there is a vote on an investigation, that people search their own conscience about whether or not they should recuse themselves if they have prejudicial feelings about Mrs. Jarvis. And I also believe that it is my personal opinion that Mr. Plasky should recuse himself from that vote because he called her the antichrist, and I believe his opinion would be prejudicial. Thank you.
Any other public comments? I see none, I'll close it. Counsel, somebody has a light on. Counselor Plasky.
I'd like to address the accusation that was made to me both in this petition and again, twice tonight. My comment about the antichrist of historic preservation, which is the part that everybody leaves out of historic preservation, was over the top. A public or private apology had not been pro-offered because it was dragged into this whole matter, and we were advised by legal counsel not to comment on this. So, therefore, none had been offered. When this issue is settled, I will make my decision then. Thank you.
Okay, counsel? Well, we already closed the public comment. Counsel, discussion.
I think in light of all the information that's passed before us tonight, I think, to be fair to both parties, we should initiate an investigation of Counselor Quacks.
The only thing I'm going to say to this, if the council should decide to do an investigation, the town has already spent approximately $5,000 on this. I'm just throwing this out there, so you people know that this, we've been advised, they don't really know what the total cost of this investigation will be, but from what I've been hearing, it's anywhere between an additional $10,000 to $15,000, which will probably exceed $20,000 when all's said and done. So, I just want to throw that out there. That's not the basis not to have an investigation, nor is it the basis to have an investigation, but I want you folks to know what that cost will be. And we're looking to, you know, we'll leave it at that. So, Counsel LeBranche?
Probably the first thing I want to say is, you know, we've addressed petitions in the past. Most recently, we addressed a forensic audit. That ended up costing the town, to this point, well over $75,000, for which we, in essence, at this point, don't have anything to show. There's some ongoing negotiations, I guess, for lack of a better term, going on, but at this point, there's nothing to show. And we actually have an outstanding balance on that, if I'm correct in saying so.
There is investigations going on, not two of them.
Right, but there is, there is an outstanding balance to that $75,000...
That we owe.
That we owe, that the town of New Market owes. And I guess, you know, I was a supporter of that petition. I believe you were a supporter of that petition also.
The forensic?
Forensic.
Oh, yes, yes.
And I believe at the time, Counselor Quacks was on, and she was a supporter, and I believe Counselor Plasky was a supporter. And we, as a council, got that passed, I believe, on a six-to-one vote. And we had counselors that did not believe it needed to be done, but still went together with, with the majority of the council. So, having said that, I mean, I'm sitting here, and I'm realizing that there's 412 people that signed a document, and that's why I'm going to refer to it as a document. 412 concerned people. And I'm also sitting here, and I've heard Counselor Quacks, you know, make her comments on the accusations, I've heard the accusations, and at this point, I'm feeling like it's a she-said, she-said situation. And the only way that I see that this thing is going to be put to bed, as we've put to bed other situations in the town recently, is to face it head-on. And that's why I would, at this point, support an investigation into the allegations.
Was there a motion made?
I did not make a motion at this point.
All right, Counselor Carr, Vice Chair Carr?
I'm going to lay in here. In my, I certainly think an investigation is not a bad idea, except for the...
In my, I certainly think an investigation is not a bad idea, except for the vast cost to the town. My question is, if we go through with the investigation, even if all of these allegations were proven, in my, in my thinking, would that rise to the level of removing a counselor? And that is where the rub is for me, is, are the things that she is accused of doing so heinous that she should be removed as a counsel, counselor?
And I guess I'm gonna, I think you said that very well, because I echo the same thing. I, it doesn't warrant, I mean, 'cause she is able to say what Mr. Vincent has said, what Diane Haddie has written a statement to as far as the monies at the dump, she reported it, it was something that was brought to her attention, and she did report it to the town administrator. Per the charter, it says you have a fiduciary responsibility, if you see something that's going on in the town, you need to report it. She did, she went through the channels. As far as the, um, the flag on crossbone and skull, whatever that thing was, the flag, that's poor judgment. That was absolutely poor judgment, she knows that. She apparently also had a conversation with, which she left out this evening, she had a conversation with Judy Glover on that, went in a matter of days, and she, you know, apologized that what she did was a poor judgment, and she even offered, at that time, I think, was to speak to Subarino people and apologize publicly, and to even buy them lunch, and Julie said, "Look, they're laughing, they think it's funny, I wouldn't worry about it." I believe that's what she said to you. So, when I look at that portion of that, and if I look at, has she really brought any discredit to the council in a legal sense? I, I have a hard time with that one. So, Counsel Minutelli?
One of the things that I was concerned about was, you know, how, at least from a personal standpoint, was how do I evaluate what we're gonna hear tonight in an objective way and reach, you know, reach a conclusion that makes sense for everybody? And I have, I have, I have struggled with that. So, I, what I've, how I've weighted my decision-making in this process is to look at, you know, there are two documents that had, and they, you know, I think that's an appropriate way to refer to them, is documents executed by, you know, in excess of, you know, 400 people, and then, and previously, a couple of hundred. And I just, you know, I think that we have responsibility to them and to Counselor Quox to get to facts. And one of the things that I was confused about tonight is how this meeting was going to be run. I thought we were going to discuss just the allegations and not, I mean, we've essentially, tonight, you know, I kind of agree with, with what Ms. Jarvis said, you know, we've engaged, to some extent this evening, in a quasi fact-finding mission, and I think that's out of place. I think the, I think that when we have people making allegations of fact, you know, I classify it as a quasi fact-finding mission. And I think that that's probably the more appropriately referred to in the investigation phase. So I don't know where I, I don't know, that's my thoughts, anyway.
I wanna ask a question on that. Are you saying that it wasn't appropriate for Counselor Quox to speak to the allegations? She had to have some opportunity.
I didn't know what, that was what I thought, you know, I don't wanna refer to a conversation that we had with, with legal counsel, but I perhaps had a different understanding than, I'll leave it at, I think I had a different understanding than perhaps other councilors did.
Well, the whole purpose was allow her to speak, because she's not had that opportunity, and the council needed to hear that in order to further weigh, to decide which way they were gonna go. That was the only intent of that, no other reason.
All I'm saying is, I don't recall that being the discussion.
Counselor Plasky?
I agree with Counsel Lebranche, this has come down a she-said, she-said situation. And I think that none of these charges warrant dismissing a counselor. And I think to waste taxpayers' money and to force the tax rates up in a future year because we've spent all this money is foolish and foolhardy. I don't support any investigation at this time, because I feel that although, although-
Excuse me, allow him to speak.
Although there are 412 people that signed this second petition who had a concern, the concerns don't warrant having an investigation to dismiss a counselor, because the chart, the, Counselor Quox has done nothing worthy of dismissal. Nothing at all worthy of dismissal. The comment she made at which meeting I was not at, when Ms. Jarvis first applied to the advisor, the alternate position of the Advisory Heritage Board, that's what discussion is all about when you're on the council. A motion is made, it's seconded, and then there is discussion, whether councilors can or cannot give their opinions on the situation. Counselor Quox gave her opinion. And because Ms. Jarvis and other people in town didn't like that, we're into this. My initial comments, the following meeting when Ms. Jarvis reapplied for that same position, the initial statements I made, I felt were true. My final comment on that was pure emotion, and I was wrong in saying that.
Okay, Counsel Lebranche?
Just a couple of points that I'd like to make. As far as, you know, Section 3.4 has interfered with administration, it's not interfered with town administrator, it's interfered with administration. And that can relate to Chief Seer, that can relate to DPW head, Rick Malaski, I can relate to a number of people that are considered administration within the town, I believe. Is that correct? That's their term? So, I mean, there is that potential for that part of 3.4. And, and as a personal note, the last part of 3.4 is, or is guilty of public conduct that result, the result of which would bring loss of respect for the council or the town of New Market. It's, it's very disheartening for someone like myself, and I'm sure for other councilors, to walk around town and hear that this is probably one of the highest-rated comedy shows on Channel 13. So I think that the loss of respect potentially is there. Now, I'm not prejudging the allegations here, but, you know, what I'm saying is, you know, if, if everything, if we do the investigation and Counselor Quox is well within her rights, then it's like, there's no issue here, okay? She was within her rights. But if it goes the other way, and Ms. Jarvis is within her rights, you know, then the council has to take a look at, you know, did she result in the loss of respect for this council? And, you know, there's, there's two items under 3.4 that I feel could qualify as dismissal, and I'm saying could.
All right, I do like to move us on, we have other items, and I believe, Counsel Minutelli?
I was just gonna say, I think that's, that's something we ought to think about too. To, to vote, to initiate an investigation isn't an indication of any wrongdoing necessarily. The, that determination will come in the investigation phase, and everybody will have an opportunity to develop their information in a more meaningful way and present it in the public forum.
Okay, that's, that's true. However, you've gotta have cause in order to go to an investigation, and that's where I'm having that difficulty. Going to an investigation doesn't merit what she's, what the allegations are, what she's been able to explain. And when you talk about interfering with administrative, doesn't necessarily mean the administrator. The two areas where she's been accused, she's already got one letter stating that she did not, she's got another comment from Mr. Vincent that said she did not. So I'm questioning, what do we look at? Counselor Plasky, please.
The last comment in 3.4 about, or is guilty of public conduct, the result of which would bring loss of respect for the council of the town, or the town of New Market. What has brought loss of respect for the council or the town of New Market has been the actions of all of us. All of us, sitting up here and sitting out there and others involved.
All right, folks, okay.
That's where the loss of respect has come. That's where the loss of respect has come, not from anything that Counselor Quox has done. Thank you.
Okay. Folks, I just, I'm not gonna yell at you, I'm beyond that at this point. Yeah, no, 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 I'm not saying anything. I'm, no, you have to be recognized by the chair. What I just simply wanted to say, excuse me, he has an opinion, he made that opinion. That's all I wanted to say to you folks. He had an opinion, he made the opinion. Leave it at that.
I want us all to think also about the fact that while there are 400-plus people who feel this way about Counselor Quox, there are also vast numbers of other people who don't feel that way. And I don't feel comfortable, there are lots of people that didn't sign the petition.
Excuse me, no more outbursts.
I don't feel comfortable-
You'll be leaving.
Spending the town's money for something that, as I said, even if she was found guilty of each one of these things, I don't feel they rise to the level of removing her from office. So I can't personally vote for that. Excuse me.
Have her step down, she'll save us a lot of money. I'm leaving.
Thank you.
You want us to give you respect, you need to give us respect too.
Okay, is there a police officer in the room? Because I'm gonna have you removed, sir, if you have one more comment.
Yeah, I'm gonna remove Mr. Glennon, I'll leave Glenn.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're not accomplishing anything.
Thank you. Okay, what does the council, we have no more lights on? The councilors, what do you wish to do, councilors? Well, somebody has to make it.
I thought we had one.
No, no, you said you didn't make it.
No, we don't, he said he could make it.
He was never seconded, he never voted.
Right. Well, he said he never made it, that's why.
I'm sorry.
I thought he did too.
My bad.
No, no, he didn't, he said he could.
What does the council wish to do here? Counsel Lebranche?
I'll make a motion to conduct an investigation into the allegations of the citizens of New Market against Counselor Quox. I guess that's probably the best way to word it.
Yeah, let's not add-
I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry?
As outlined in-
As outlined in a document dated, I have a date on that, I'm sorry.
The one I-
It's dated November 6th.
Yeah.
Dated November 6th of 2008.
Right.
Dated, dated October 20th, 2006.
Eight.
Eight.
I second that motion.
I second that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call. And Counsel Quox will not be voting. Counsel Bergeron?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Plasky?
Nay.
Counsel Minutelli?
Aye.
Counsel Carr?
Nay.
Chairman Glennon? Nay. Motion fails. Okay, let's move on to Item Number Two, Approval for Town Administrator to Sign Necessary Paperworks for Smith Sisters Conservation Land Purchase. Do you folks want to take a break?
Chairman Glennon, can I have the floor for just one moment, please? Right now, I would publicly apologize to Ms. Jarvis for my comment about the Antichrist, it was way out of line. My sincere apologies.
It's not slander, he has a right to speak publicly. Yes, research, five minutes, please. What he should be doing, instead of coming to meet with the council and the school board.